I believe we have our interpreter here. Okay, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself, please?
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Noemi Vázquez y estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguien necesita asistencia, por favor de avisar. Gracias.
Gracias, señora Vázquez. Also, as was previously noted on the slide that we had up, headsets are available for anyone with a hearing disability. Just ask us and we will provide the headset. That brings us to the superintendent's report. Dr. Sarvis?
We don't have a superintendent's report tonight, but we will at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. That brings us then to correspondence. Is there any correspondence from board members? Okay, hearing none? Public comments, are there any public comments? Nope, hearing none. We will move on then to our conference agenda. We have one item on our conference agenda. That is a report on the 2005-2006 unaudited actuels, which Mr. Wolf will be presenting. Thank you.
Well, this is a much awaited item. We're pleased to get the information tonight and we're all anxious to see what it looks like. Mr. Wolf and quite a few staff members have been working on this. We have two of them in the back of the room, Patty Pimentel and Shirley Corpus. Thank you for all of your energy on this. Tonight's report is on the unaudited actuels for the year-end balances from last year's budget. And Bob Wolf, who is our Director of Finance, will be making the presentation tonight.
Okay.
Can I ask a question right away? I think for the public, it would be very helpful just to have a little glossary of terms. Where is it, what does unaudited actuels mean? Where's the term come from? It's, to most people, it's just so much jargon. Maybe you could make it clear to us all.
I can answer the first question. The second question is beyond me. I don't know where the term came from, other than I can probably speculate. We close our, we run our books and we run our financial reports through the system and through the, through all the days and run it through the, through the normal processes. At the end of that normal process, like any other business, we close our books. Those, those numbers that we have are what we call our actuels. Our actual lending balances, our actuels that we have. Those haven't been audited by a private or a public firm that's required by the state of California. Therefore, they become the unaudited actuels when we present them. Those go up to the state of California, the state of California looks at those. We also then have the external audit firm come in and check our books and do their due diligence under the auditing standards. And once that's done, they produce an audit report that says our records were correct or we made a mistake someplace. And then the adjustments are made to those unaudited actuels. And that audit report then goes to the state of California. And then we have an audited, basically, financial statement, like any other large, major business, to put forward to the public that in fact we were keeping our records accurately or we made, we goofed someplace. So that's, that's the terminology, unaudited actuels. My speculation as to where it came from.
Well, it's fairly descriptive as you clarify.
Yeah, and it's very unique to schools. I've never really seen it. It's really just your year-end report or your unaudited report. But for some reason, we shortened it to be unaudited actuels, so that's what you have.
Thank you, sir. I think the important thing is that we know that these are the balances from last year's budget.
Yeah, and you have to understand that the state of California, once they get our report on the unaudited actual report, they put that into their database. And they put that, and they add all of those ending fund balances that we said were our unaudited actuels into their database. And so when they produce the software for the following year, those ending balances are what are compared to our beginning balances in the state report. If there's an adjustment, if the audit, the audit firm comes in and says there's adjustment, we did something, you know, we misclassified something or did something that wasn't right or we were having difficulties trying to figure out what exactly we were supposed to do in the general ledger and they make an adjustment, that adjustment then goes up to the state of California. They add that into their database so that we have the audited final ending fund balance for the prior year that rolls over into the next year for the, for the next year's unaudited actuels. Closeout. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
We have a draft report for you. This is the combined general fund. You have these forms in front of you. And you also have the draft packet of the state software. It's for the public, it looks like this. It's just the first two pages of each of the funds that are indicated here. The information comes down, there's a little bit of a glitch that we're having. We have a Fund VII that was set up in our, just in our records that rolls into the general fund for the, for the tax revenue anticipation notes or trans. Right now, everything looks right, except we have this $74,000 that's coming from Fund VII that's popping up as an out-of-balance in general, in the general fund. Because when we roll the report into the state software, VII combines with one. And it apparently, in prior years, there was some kind of an accounting error that didn't get stuck into our records or into the general fund to take care of this. So we're researching with the audit firm now how to get, how to get rid of this. This is probably an overstatement of the assets in the general fund, which I'll go through and try to explain to you because there's a couple of different numbers as you look at these forms. First of all, this is the, this is the combined report. This is our revenues and all of the sources and all of our expenditures and uses. The ending fund balance is here, that's combined restricted and unrestricted fund balance. We have a resolving, revolving cash reserve and a stores reserve, which is at the warehouse. And so, and so the 3% minimum fund balance that we're required to have is this number right here. And that's 3% of this figure by state law. That's the way the state calculates it. Now, as you look at the unrestricted, as I broke it out, is the unrestricted. You see, here's the beginning fund balance that we started with. Here's our revenues. This is the contributions to the restricted accounts. This is for special ed, transportation, the other funds that we had to make contributions to. Because one, in one case, because the federal government's never fully funded their special education encroachment. The federal government said 20 years ago, they were going to give us 40%. They've given us 18% at the high, and now it's down to 17 this year. And then here's the ending fund balance for the restricted. Out of this, out of this comes these two figures. And we end up with a different number. Now, this is the actual unrestricted amount. And when I say unrestricted amount, I mean in 000 resource. The state software considers lottery funding, the 1100 series of lottery funding, as unrestricted revenue, which is why this figure, this figure here shows, shows that amount. So this is, this is the combination of this, the lottery funding.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wolf, can I just interrupt you for one second?
Yes.
Can you just explain what 000 resource means?
That's the unrestricted, that's the unrestricted resource code.
Oh, okay.
So Fund Zero?
Fighting a bug, excuse me.
Fund Zero?
Yeah, it, okay. Yeah, people like to talk about the general fund. And we'll say the general fund to you when they're talking about things. Actually, what happens is, is the general fund is both the categorical and unrestricted funding sources. Unrestricted is primarily the revenue limit. So the, that revenue generated by the ADA or the students in the seats is the primary focus of that. Now, in the unrestricted fund, you can have local donations that are just general donations without any strings attached. You can have the civic center fees that come into the district. You could have, you know, any one of a number of sources of funds that are unrestricted. That means no strings attached. Restricted means strings attached. They're both in the general fund, but mostly you hear people talk about, and they'll say general fund and they're talking about unrestricted or the 000 resource. Or they're talking, or they'll say categoricals and they're talking about the general fund restricted portion of it. The states, the state doesn't consider lottery, the 1100 series, as restricted funding. It's actually unrestricted funding, but it's accounted for in a restricted way, which is why it has a separate resource code of 1100. Okay, so that's the difference. Now, we also have, just to add to the confusion, you also have a 6300 lottery fund that is restricted. That is over on this side of the house. And that is for textbooks only. And so you're restricted to, in the use of that, more so than the lottery, than the 1100 lottery. But they're both unrestricted, one's unrestricted, one's not. So this figure here contains an unrestricted form. And one of the forms that I provided to you, and it's a couple, it is a couple sheets down here, I've broken out the fund balances by program as you, as you see it. So when you, when you start to look at it, so this figure here, which is the figure that's on your sheet, is not quite the figure on your sheet because this is, this is the lottery fund plus the unrestricted. And then on your sheet, you have this, this part added in too. And since I don't know that this is an accurate number yet and we're still researching in the GL where this exactly comes from or how we're getting rid of it. But this is essentially what you see. So this is the unrestricted balance in the general fund without any lottery attached to it or anything else, which is why I put this number down here for the shortfall because this number needs to get up to cover this total amount of money. And then, of course, the restricted funds you can see is basically here. Large ending fund balance in the restricted funds. In some cases, that's because we just got the money. In some cases, it's because it's not being spent. These are the other funds that are here. Fund 12 is the Child Development Fund. You can see they have a, actually have a very healthy ending fund balance. They ended up on a very positive note this year. This is the Cafeteria Fund. This ending fund balance is bolstered by the fact that we donated $128,000 to their fund this year. This is the stores that's out of this. So you can see that their actual cash is very small, about $10,000. Fund 14 is the deferred revenue, or deferred maintenance account that Mr. Hittjung takes care of the facilities with. Again, this is by law, it requires one-half of 1% of the general fund. Unrestricted, or the total general fund, but it comes out of the unrestricted amount. We can't donate restricted fund dollars to this account. So, and you can see there's a healthy balance there for Mr., and then the bond fund. This is the Capital Facilities Fund or the Developer Fee Fund, as we like to call it. And the Fund 30. Now, this is an old, this is the old fund that's now obsolete. Way back when, when it was the state construction lease-purchase plan, this district obviously did something with the state of California to build something. And back in those days, the state of California owned the buildings. If you used $1 of state fund to do maintenance or anything with the, with the building, they owned it. About four or five years ago, I believe, the state of California decided to divest themselves of the responsibility of the school buildings and gave back and did a, basically, a quick claim deed to all the school districts and gave the property back to the school districts. Then they turned around and said, oh, but you've got to maintain it. So it was sort of a catch-22. They weren't maintaining it, they weren't providing their one-half of 1% all the time. But once, once they gave it back to the districts, the districts had to come up with that cash in addition to the 2.5% that goes into the restricted routine maintenance account that's part of the general fund. And then this is, this is the other construction fund.
Ms.?
Fund 12 is the Child Development Fund.
Mr. Wolf, can you make it clear that this is combined elementary and secondary?
Yes, this is combined elementary and secondary. Yes, these are both funds. Now, now, in the case of, yeah, yeah, here we go. This is a combined fund, general, this is combined. This is just in the elementary school district and this is just in the elementary school district. These funds are found. I don't remember if this is in both funds or not.
I'm thinking more specifically to the previous slide.
The previous slide was...
All those numbers are combined?
Was the combined funds, yes.
Just so that people understand that.
Yes.
And then are you going to talk a little bit later about when we look at?
I can break that down for you. That's a farther slide down, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is, this is the sheet that I talked about where I provided to you the ending fund balances. And you can see, you can see here that the ending fund balance for the unrestricted, which is this, this is the 00, this is what I consider four zeros up here, is the 31,000. Here's the state lottery, 1100. Now, these designations here are designations by the state of California. F means fund balance, means it's ours to keep. Once we get it, it's ours. The little d means it's a deferred revenue. If I don't spend it, I don't get it. And so that gets treated separately. Now, on the documents that you have, we haven't made that final transfer out to the, to the deferred revenue accounts. And so you're going to see the big fund balances. But you can see over here, these are all of the deferred revenue accounts. And so all of this money over on this side will disappear in the fund balance in the final, in the final report that you get. And it not really, it doesn't really disappear, but it disappears out of the fund balance because it's not really a fund balance. It's a liability deferred revenue. And the difference between a fund balance and a deferred revenue is, is that the federal government or the state of California, who's ever funded is, can come in and ask for that money back because we didn't spend it. And so in the case of Title I, and this is our basically Title I, there's $200,000 that the federal government could come in tomorrow and ask for a check. Well, 198, 34277. Because we did not spend that now.
Does that happen very often?
No, not necessarily, because generally speaking, most of the, an amendment, I think it's the tidings amendment, allows most federal funding to carry over for another year. Also, you have to understand that the federal government's budget does not end or our, our commitment to the federal government's budget does not end until September 30th. And so, once we close our books, we have this, we have this ending fund balance, but we have, we have three months left to spend it or a, plus a year. And generally speaking, if you have carryover, you spend your carryover first. And that's, that's the presumption. But no, I've never seen that happen yet. It doesn't mean that it can't or won't, but I, but it's very rare that you do that. If you carry over a 15% balance, however, in the federal government, the federal government could come in and ask for that at any time. And since they're looking for cash for bombs and things like that, that's, that's a possibility. But this is, this is well under 15%. The elementary school districts, Title I was $1.6 million this year, their entitlement. So 15% of that's, you know, 1.6 plus half. So quite, it's about $200,000 is their 15%. And so this is the combined total for both districts. We're well under that amount of money. So not really a problem, but just, just, this is just an accounting issue. And then we go on to the back page.
Can I, can I ask a quick question about the categorical or the Title I funding? Is that possibly a function of declining enrollment? So we're not spending it at the same, is that, is there any connection there? Expenditures under Title I and number of students?
Well, the, well, Title I funding is dependent upon free and reduced lunch. So if you have families showing up and generally speaking in the, you, you, generally speaking, in the elementary school district, you get a lot more families come in and fill out the paperwork and let, let you know that they're on free and reduced lunch. At this, it's a secondary district, it seems to be a bad thing or an omen that people won't come in and do that, which is too bad because they qualify. So you could have, you could be in a situation where you're in declining attendance enrollment, but your free and reduced lunch rates are going up. So it is, it is dependent upon the factor of the kids and the people filling out the forms and the parents doing what they're, you know, filling out the forms and turning them in. But yes, yes, it does depend on students, but not necessarily tied to attendance. So this is the rest of the slide. Unfortunately, I forgot to put the title on, I'm sorry. But you can see here that we, I sort of footed things down to come up with the same totals.
I want to go back to the Title I issue again, just to clarify a little bit further beyond what you said. So it comes, it goes, the federal fiscal year goes to the end of September?
That's correct.
It's October?
Through September.
And the state fiscal year ends as?
July through January.
Yeah.
Or July through June, I'm sorry.
And so there's July, August, September, that you still have Title I funds. And, and so this 198, 342 represents that?
Yes. You have to understand...
What is our history in terms of, at the end of September, having spent or not spent all of the Title I or having carried forward the 15% allowable?
We've, we've never carried in excess of 15% that I know of, that I've seen in the last three or four years that I've looked at it. We've had a higher balance at the end of the year closer to 15%, but we've never, never had more than 15% in carryover.
How do we, how do we accomplish, how do we do that? And I, and let me just explain a little bit. I remember at the university getting memos saying that there's some unspent money, get your requests in now or the money goes away. Do we do something like that?
We haven't done that. But what we have done is we have put an emphasis with the program staff upstairs. And now you have a program coordinator that looks at those things. And she probably is doing that. Dr. White is very good about watching the budget and making sure people spend the money where they're supposed to spend the money in accordance with the plan that's been approved by the board. So that's probably why we have a lower ending fund balance now than we, than we have had in the past. Because for the last year or so, Dr. White and Mr. Gonzalez have been standing on the sites to make sure that the money gets spent. And I know that the assistant superintendents have been talking and working with their principals to make sure that they're spending the money on the kids that need, need the services that they got the money for.
May, may I interrupt at this point? Because my wheels are spinning...
At this point, it's not an interruption.
Oh, no, my, my wheels are spinning exactly like yours. But when you're, when you must supplement and you cannot supplant, it's, these dollars are sitting in front of us and our hands are tied. But I guess I would like to refresh board members' memories and probably Ms. Sowaski and Dr. Sarvis recall that when we did the single plans last year, there were elementary schools that had quite a bit of carryover, individual schools. Other schools did not, but a number did.
Hundreds of thousands that had not been spent on services and that needed the approval of site council. And we've worked very hard this year, well, I'll let Robin speak to this. We've worked very hard this year to ensure that those schools spend that money on services for kids.
According to plan.
According to plan, that's right.
Yeah.
Actually, I believe, and Bob can validate this or not, I think the schools are in much better shape. In fact, some of them spent more than they had and they had to find ways to, to augment what they needed, particularly for programs that were in their plan. There's a lot of money at the elementary level, at the district still, because the, the professional development, a lot of it that we had this summer and toward the, you know, and starting this year, was set aside and it got implemented now. So it will be, that amount will go way down by September. And actually, this carryover plus all of next year's allotment is pretty much spent entirely with all of our professional development and other plans we have.
And these are the required set-asides because we have program improvement schools in the district?
Exactly, right.
So that, those 10% set-asides for each school are in there too?
Well, I believe you're talking about the set-asides for this year's budget. So we do have set-asides this year, but this is last year's budget.
Yes, and what that includes, you know, we have to have like the 5% for transportation for choice. We need to have the SES, now the Supplemental Educational Services. Tonight, we're having our first SES fair at McKinley. Those monies have to be in place for the kids. And then whatever's not used is put back in. So that represents a little bit of that as well.
Okay.
Right.
That kind of, those kind of unspent things associated with program improvement status may, may be in there.
Right, correct.
Do they then, do they then become free and usable? Are they fungible?
Yes. We, we can then use them and they go into the pot of carryover. And like Bob said, you can't carry over more than 15%. And it becomes part of the funds that we can then use to target. And we, we can bring them back in at the district level and then send it back out to programs that most, that target the most needy kids. And all of our principals actually knew that this year was the last year that they were going to be able to carry over funds at their sites. That their school plan and their budget had to be so in line and use that money appropriately that at the end of this next year, we gave them a year to practice that. And at the end of next year, everything goes back to the district and we reallocate to where the needs, we see the needs being the greatest. And they all are fine with that. So they did a much better job this year. It was really good.
And most of them spent all their money this year. And especially in Title I. There's only, I think, two school sites that didn't spend down to, you know, 26 cents or $5.08, so. When you, when you tell them you're taking their money away, they find a way to use it.
It's amazing, isn't it?
For the kids, yeah, it's amazing. Okay. So now you asked about the differences between the elementary school district and the, and the secondary school district. This looks at the general fund. The elementary school district is on the top, secondary district's on the bottom. You can see the difference. The minimum reserve required by the elementary school district is $1.2 million. And you have this, oh, I guess I didn't provide this slide, I'm sorry. I should have done that, but I lost it. So in the elementary school district, there are about $455,000 under 3%. And the high school district is basically over that. And so what I've done is when I provided you the, the prior sheet, this sheet, I showed you where I made 3% up. So I took, I took money from, and this is in accordance with the state school accounting manual that says I can use this, these resources in this particular account code. So I took some money there, some money here, $50,000 out of each of those to make up the difference of the 3%. Doesn't mean we can't use it next year when money comes in and we can realign this. But for this year, for the report, we have 3% at the districts.
Did you say that, that previous slide, we don't have hard copy?
No, you don't, I'll, I'll provide that, I'm sorry.
I would, I would hope that we get that right away.
I was already late, I'm sorry about that.
For the members of the public.
Going the wrong direction.
We're sort of obliged to make sure the public gets those documents.
Right. So once again, you have the combined general, general fund for the elementary school district. You have the unrestricted and restricted, and this is the secondary district.
Could you say that again about how you moved, where you brought funds in?
Where we brought funds in, here's the contribution. So this is the contribution to special ed to, well, shoot, special ed and transportation. So there's $6.2 million at the elementary, that's the secondary school district spent on funds that they contributed. The elementary school district is $3.1 million.
Are those those, that, that account that you...
Yes.
Talking about 87.50 or whatever.
Yes.
So it's not just in special ed, it's, what was the, there's a list of four or five items that encroachment?
Yeah, right now, well, yeah, some of this money went out to, some of the money went out to the cafeteria fund. Some of the money went out to transportation. Home-to-school transportation is the biggest hit. The special ed transportation's not that large a hit. It's about $2,000, $3,000 this year. But the home-to-school, the regular home-to-school transportation is a much larger hit.
How much?
Right off the top of my head, I don't know. I'll have that figure for you next time, for you.
And the, and the cafeteria fund, how much?
Was $128,000 this year. And that gives them...
And that's money that if it had not been taken there, it would be where?
It would be in the ending fund balance. It would be, it would be in this figure here or this figure here.
Mary used to have a line called "available for the board." Would it have been in that line?
If the, if the rest of the lines had your 3% in there, yes, it would be, the 128 would be in that line, yes.
Can I, I guess I didn't ask my question right. $455,000 minus $400,000 gets us 50 of...
This, this, this.
This minus the one on the bottom.
Yes. This plus this is equal, equals to that.
This, the 455, and then you go all the way to the bottom, the short trial there is 400. That comes out to 55.
Right, and that's correct. And that's why I used, that's why you have the other document that shows where I took money from the categorical programs as I could to make up the difference.
You mean there's a reverse encroachment? You can go to the categoricals?
I can, we can, you, basically, the board can designate some categorical funding, not all categorical funding, and take some of the money and use it for the Reserve for Economic Uncertainty. Reserve for Economic Uncertainties, which is essentially the three percent ending fund balance. So in order to make that ending fund balance, we did that, I provided that sheet to you by program, uh, as to what I took out and where I took it out and the reason I took it out for. Doesn't mean that the money's unavailable next year, it just means that that money is used or designated for the, in the ending balance this year to make the three percent.
And did that stay within, I know we have a single district now, but if we're gonna move funds across the districts, we have to have special board resolution to do that. Was that not necessarily because you slid them over laterally within each district?
Well, yes and no. Uh, you, you have two different situations going on. Uh, you're designating, you, you basically have a combined report, and so I'm not really moving money when I'm doing the report. All I'm doing is putting together the, the combined districts, adding them together, and making three percent. But at the county treasurer, we still are two different organizations. The elementary school district has their bank account and the, and the high school district has their bank account. Should the elementary school district go into the red and not be able to fund any bills, then yes, then the board would hear, um, you know, a proposal from my office or from the business services department to move cash from the bank account of the secondary district to the sec, to the bank account of the, of the elementary school district. But we didn't really move any cash, we just are reporting a combined total right now.
So it's really all on paper as far as meeting the minimum reserve?
It's on paper at the state, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Uh, could you give, I, I, I think I grasped that last point about the categoricals going the other way. Uh, do you have some totals or numbers for the elementary and the high school district? How much was used to account for the reserves in each?
How, and, by, hmm. I don't have that separate report right now, I can get that for you. I mean, I can answer that question when I, when I come up as to, on this particular slide, how much is one and how much is the other, I can do that. For, I can do that right now for this because I have that on the other slide, the unrestricted general fund. We can do that, because we, I can, that have that. But as far as how much of this belongs to the elementary school district, I would say probably none. It's probably all in the secondary district. Uh, as far as how much of the economic impact aid is at the secondary district, probably none. It's probably all at the high school district or at the elementary school district, but I'd, but I don't know that for a fact, I'd have to look and get you that information.
So you'll help us understand which of the, of the categorical funds are being used-
Being designated for that, yes.
Yeah. And you say, once they're used that way, that doesn't really lock them up?
It can, but it doesn't have to. If all of a sudden you, you have, if you all of a sudden have a large increase in unrestricted general fund balance for some reason, let's say, I don't know, you had a bunch of people, um, you, you got to the point where you all of a sudden turned your attendance around, and you had more kids and all of a sudden that generated more income or more unrestricted income, and this figure went up, all you need to have is three percent. Doesn't really matter where the money, it has to be, doesn't have to, mostly has to be unrestricted, but there are instances and, and there are programs where you can use money to put away for a rainy day essentially or to make your three percent.
Yeah, I mean, you know, you see where I'm, what I'm trying to understand. I mean, those, those categorical funds were given for specific purposes, and if, I'm trying to see what the implications are for-
And, and that's-
Whether we're constraining ourselves with regard to those specific purposes.
I tried to take as little as possible for the report, which is why I provided this document to you so you could see where the money was coming from and which programs.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Go back one.
Go back one.
Whoops.
Wrong direction, I'm sorry. You probably want, you probably want that one.
Yeah. I, I don't quite get the seventy-four thousand at the bottom, seventy-five thousand. Does that put us, rather than a shortfall, kind of more even?
This is, this is, if you look at your document and the general fund document that you have on your desk, this seventy-four thousand is on the second page, right underneath the beginning balance, uh, about halfway down on the page. Let me put my glasses on so I can see that. It's, it says ni, it says ninety-seven, ninety-three. No, it's this page right here, on this page right here, ninety-seven, ninety-three on the second page, and it's probably upside down because I did back to front. So the second page is on the back of the, of the first page. I tried to limit the amount of paper you had, and that says audit adjustments, okay? And that was our attempt, because when, when we put this information into this, when we download this information into the state software, the state software has what they call a technical review checklist, and it goes through and it makes sure things are where they're supposed to be and does all this nice kind of stuff. The problem with it becomes is that this district has set up funds to be slightly different where they wanted to keep track of things separately. So they wanted to keep track of the trans or the tax revenue anticipation note separately, and so they set up a Fund Seven. Fund Seven doesn't exist in the state of California's, uh, software package. So what happens is, is that that Fund Seven downloads itself or, or uploads itself when we upload into the state software and rolls into the, into Fund One. Now, last year or the year before, the year before, I don't know really when, because I haven't really researched this yet because it's just popped up, we didn't do something correctly in our accounting for this seventy-four thousand dollars, and so we're trying to find out what it is. So either, in the general fund right now, in, in the, it's actually in the high school district, um, your, your assets are either overstated or your liabilities are understated by this seventy-four thousand nine ninety-seven. And we're talking with the audit, audit firm to try to figure out how we can get it to disappear, and I think what it is, I think is the assets are overstated by seventy-four nine ninety-seven.
So are we in a shortfall then?
No. The, the high school, the high school district has about eighty thousand dollars left over, uh, for board direction after their three percent, so this takes it right down to the wire at the, at the unaudited actual time, and that's probably mainly because of the large carryover in, in restricted balances. I mean, as you look at, as you look at the balance sheet, they're about fifty-fifty, and this is a huge balance, and this is a huge balance. This balance in restricted funds exceeds the unrestricted dollars, and part of that problem is because all of the strings attached on this, um, and we didn't necessarily have a plan in place or, or a system in place to make sure that this got used appropriately. And so rather than misuse it, it wasn't used at all. Now, there's a, there's a plan in place, there's a software program that's out there that's been brought into the district where the, the principals sit down or the administrators sit down, and they do their plan for their single-site plan, and it just flows right into the budget for them. And so that, it's a very helpful tool, uh, that I've heard good things about, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but they don't let me play with too many things.
We'll be presenting that at the next board meeting.
Uh, could you, could you just go over the idea of deficit spending and how one reads that, and to see whether it happened or it did not happen?
Well, this is a bad thing because I don't- And of course, you'd have to ask me this in a year when we didn't deficit spend any place. Uh, let's go to here. Let's say, for example, in this year in the child development fund, and I'll pick on child development, but they didn't do it this year. Let's say that these resources, the revenues and the sources of fund, the donations and the child, and the child fees and the family fees and things like that, uh, equaled less than this amount of money. What you would end up with is you would end up with a deficit spending situation. Now, you don't want to really do that too much, and you really wouldn't want to do that in this fund because they only have thirty-nine hundred dollars in the, in their fund balance. Uh, but in some cases, you may want a deficit spend. If you had a ten or eleven or a twelve percent reserve, which would be nice, the board would probably want to make a decision to share that with the employees that, that got you there. And so that would be a, a calculated decision by the board to deficit spend. Uh, you, whenever you deficit spend, the county education office and the state of California get real excited because they think that you don't know what you're doing, but if it's, if it's a plan, and normally they ask the question, why are you deficit spending, or you've done it two years in a row, and you say, well, we've had a, you know, we had a ten percent reserve or we had a fifteen percent reserve, and we're trying to get down to, you know, five or six for cash flow purposes, and we're sharing that with our employees, and we had a couple of things that, you know, you may reserve something, you may have a big, huge lawsuit that you may want to hold on to money for, and so you reserve that money, one or two million dollars because you think that's what it's going to cost, and the lawsuit gets settled for, you know, fifty thousand, well, then you've got, you know, one point five left over. That's not part of the, the current, um, account. So the revenues here and the expenditures and this contribution and all this, this is, this is all current year activity. The, and the beginning balance and the ending fund balance are like carryovers or from the prior years, and so you can deficit spend in the current year, but if you have a large enough beginning fund balance, it doesn't really make a difference other than the fact that hopefully you're doing it on a planned basis and you've made that decision to do that.
Well, as I read that last chart then, we did not, overall, not in those particular funds, we, we did not deficit spend. Revenue sources, elementary district, forty-three, seven oh four.
That would be correct.
And expenditures, forty-three, one thirty-four, and, and a beginning balance of, of, of a million four seventy-five?
Right.
Okay. So I'm reading that correctly?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
If, I'm sorry, if you went back to that last slide, would, would Fund Thirteen then show a deficit spending?
It would, yes, I guess I should have picked on them. If I didn't have, if I, we didn't make this transfer right here, then they would be, this would be in a deficit, this would be a negative number.
Okay.
Because you can see that you, you gave them this much money and this is all they have left, so there's a, there's a fifty thousand dollar difference there, so there abouts.
And, and we've been doing that for a number of years, is that correct?
Well, about five or six years ago, I think reportedly they had a one point two million dollar surplus, and then over the last three or four years, they've had, you know, equipment has gotten, become obsolete and they've had to replace equipment, and somebody probably, we weren't really watching things as closely as we probably should have. There's probably any, any one of a number of reasons, the biggest one is probably the equipment obsolescence. If you have a, an oven, that's a commercial oven that was built in nineteen fifty that you put into a, into the cafeteria, it has all kinds of things in it that it's not supposed to, asbestos and things like that, and over thirty or forty years of use, the grease and the, they probably even have paper wrapped, uh, electrical wires within the oven itself. I mean, I, I pulled an oven out of my house, it's a night, from nineteen fifty, uh, and they have paper wrapped wire that's basically disintegrating and, and, so, yeah, so, you know, when you have to replace that equipment, it's expensive because now it's up to code and now there's newer, newer equipment. It's also energy efficient, so it saves you money on that end, but it doesn't save you money when you go out and purchase it.
Let me see if I can respond to that question correctly, though. Um, we just had control over this information one year ago. This was our first year to make that contribution.
I mean, last- As I, as I recall the presentations before the board on the cafeteria fund last year, not taking into account the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar error that the auditor seemed to make or the consultant seemed to make on not trying to, uh, trace that receivable. You had about a five hundred thousand dollar deficit in the cafeteria fund and spending last year. That was not counting that, that, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar error which made it up to seven fifty. This year, you're only, you, you have a very small deficit, you only have about fifty thousand dollars. They've been, you, you've paid for a cash handling system that now records the cash that they can trace.
But do they, are they, I thought we made loans to them that they are paying back and like-
That is correct.
Last year they, they had to default.
Well, last year was the first year you made a loan to them.
Yeah.
That's correct, and this year, we thought they were gonna, we, we thought that that was going to happen, but they didn't, they didn't quite make that because they're, they're at one twenty-eight. That is correct.
So we, so we had to-
Bail them out again.
We had to bail them, yeah, thank you, your, your word, not mine. One twenty-eight, five nine.
Well, you had to, you-
And, and, but, I, I think it's very important for the public to understand that that is money that might have been spent for educational purposes that was spent to bail the cafeteria out.
Well, one of the reasons that the federal government started the free and reduced lunch program and, and the, uh, national lunch program and the national breakfast program was because back in World War Two, they decided that in order for somebody, a citizen of the country, uh, to be effective and to learn how to lead, they had, or to learn how to read and to be effective in the military against the enemies of the state, that they had to be fed, well-fed, because they found that nutrition was directly related to learning.
And Napoleon learned that a lot, a lot earlier, I think.
Well, I understand that, but it took the federal government, I guess, another two or three hundred years. But that, but the national lunch program and the national breakfast program has its, has its origins in the nineteen forties because of that, because of the draftees and they, the malnutrition that most of those, uh, inductees had.
Mr. Wolf, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Doesn't the elementary, um, district experience a structural deficit from one year to the next simply because of declining enrollment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. You, you could, yes, that is, that is correct. They, not, not only in declining enrollment, but also in loss of students to, um, charter schools, because the, the funding, the funding model for the state of California is you get the higher of your last two years of ADA. For charter schools, they're not, they don't get that. Charter schools are funded on their current year ADA, and so a number of, a couple of years ago, the state of California decided that for those students that were in your school district this year at a regular school that transferred over in the current year to a charter school, they're not going to pay you for that. They're not going to give you that, that amount of money. Now, this year, that's about forty-three students so far, as of September eighth, I think it was, the number was forty-three. The dis, the, the elementary school district lost a hundred and fifty-eight kids on Oc, on September the eighth from what the, from the prior year, and that was in, that's enrollment and nose count and verified absences. Uh, forty-three of those are going to a charter school, are presumably going to a charter school this year, and when you apply the absence factor, that's about forty kids, which is two teachers. So that means at the start of this year, the state of California takes our P two ADA that they would normally fund us at because that's the higher year because we're in declining, and they subtract forty students from that. That forty students is about two hundred and some odd thousand dollars, I, right off the top of my head, I can't get the change. Well, that's, that's great, that's two classroom teachers, but when you, when you take the average teacher compensation and you weigh that against the two hundred thousand plus dollars, that's actually about three point five teachers, which means that you're now funding one point two teachers, I guess it's one, it's three point two. Uh, you're now funding one point two teachers that you really need because you didn't lose, you know, sixty kids, you only lost forty kids, but you don't have that funding, and yes, your rate went up slightly to hopefully make, you know, make the, make the change, but that's money that you'll never have again unless those kids come back into the, the regular district or the regular schools.
That's a very helpful explanation. Would you just repeat that number, how many we lost as of September second? Hundred and what?
We lost a hundred and fifty-eight.
One six eight?
One five eight, I believe is the number. Is that right, Robin?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the high school lost three fifty-four.
Three six four?
Three five four. So the total loss this year on September the eighth is five hundred and plus, five hundred plus students.
Yeah, that won't be official until our C-bench count date in October.
I mean, those are basically nose counts that were the kids that were in seats and the verified absences. So the difference between the verified absences, the nose counts of the kids that were actually in school for the combined districts is about five, five oh eight, I think, five oh nine, something like that this year.
I thought there was kind of a lag effect, uh, on the, on the budget reduction.
Well, there, there is, except, yes, there is, there is a lag effect on the, on the budget reduction. That's the declining enrollment, the, the, the prior year you can use, except that, that gets impacted by those children that were in your district last year that moved to a charter school this year in your district. If Johnny Jones was at McKinley last year and he moved to Peabody, we lose Johnny Jones as an ADA this year. Even though we get to keep the higher of the two years, he's in the higher of the two years, but he subtracted out instantaneously, immediately. If Johnny Jones goes to the charter school in Ventura or Oxnard, we don't lose a thing, because we don't know that he went to a charter school, we just know he's no longer in the district. So it's only for district-sponsored charter schools. And there is, there is, there is, has been legislation afoot to change that, so, because even with, because if Johnny Jones was at Peabody last year, or was it McKinley- or was at McKinley the year before, went to Peabody last year and came back into the district, the district doesn't get credit for Johnny Jones until P2 at the end of the year. There is, there is, has been legislation afoot to give us credit for that ADA that we gained back or to use it as a buffer against the ADA that we lost. But that hasn't passed.
Ms. Stark, in her memorandum to the board that we got the night she, her last appearance here, talked about set-asides for possible insolvency, fund insolvencies. And I think her example was the cafeteria fund. If I understand that correctly, she's saying that we need to hedge on this type of thing. We need some protection by setting up special, special reserves in some sense. I had to use those words in the wrong context, but...
No, no, you're right. You have to look at your funding sources and what you think you're going to do. Right now, the cafeteria fund is sort of in flux because a decision has to be made about whether you're going to use a kitchen that's centralized and provide service to everybody, like essentially what we're doing, or whether you're going to decide to allow the kitchen staff to be spread out like they're currently at where they've got, where you've got multiple kitchens. The problem with that is if that's what your decision's going to be, you have 13 school sites. Each school site's probably going to cost you what Santa Barbara High School will cost you to replace the equipment and the walls. I'm assuming that they're all about the same vintage year as Santa Barbara High School. And so when they start, when the, when the equipment starts going down or when the health department shuts you down because the, because of the asbestos on the wiring or the asbestos in the insulation and you have to go in there and start tearing all that stuff out, you're looking at maybe $2, $3 million per kitchen to replace all of the equipment like you would do the central kitchen one time. If that's your decision, then you need to start looking at reserving $2 and $3 million per kitchen, per site in order to pay for that. So you would be correct. You would have to set aside something for that kind of funding to do that. You're going to have more people and more costs associated with deliveries to 13 different kitchens as opposed to delivery to one kitchen, for example.
Ms. Stark used the plural, possible fund insolvencies. Are there other funds that are in jeopardy in the same way?
Well, the child development fund can-
Risky funds?
The child development fund can go either way depending on the funding. A lot of their funding is federal funding or state funding. So if that happens to go down, they either have to cut back their services or they have to find a way to live a little bit easier. The retiree benefit fund, you have, you have a $900,000 unfunded liability, 977 by the actuarial study under the current contracts that you now-
900, I don't know.
$977,000. That was in the report to the board by Mr. Al from Aon Consulting, the actuarial firm.
And that's now?
That's, that's the actuarial cost 30 years out. So each year, for the next 30 years, in order to fund, to have a funded liability as opposed to an unfunded liability, the district needs to put away $977,000 a year into a special account, which is my next project, to fund those, fund those retiree benefits. And, yeah, that's a million, that's a million dollars.
And I think you, you explained to me that about, or you explained it and then I subsequently looked it up, about GASP, what do you call it?
GASP, the Government Accounting Standards Board.
Thank you. I have trouble with acronyms. And they are changing or have changed the standard and that will go-
They've already changed the standard. It's just, it's just waiting for implementation.
Okay. And waiting in how long?
2007, 2008 is our year.
Then it will no longer be an option on our part to-
Actually, it will be an option on your part. The problem that you have is that, I'm sorry, there's a little nat here. The problem that you have if you do not fund your liability, and there is no requirement right now to fund that liability. But should you go out, should you decide to go out and say, let's do another construction bond and let's go to the public and ask that, the public may vote and say, yeah, you can have, you know, another whatever million dollars on your bond fund. When you go out to sell your bonds, those bonding agencies and those people that buy your bonds are going to look and say, geez, you've got this $30 million or $10 million liability and you're not doing anything about that. We're not going to, you're not a good risk. We're not going to take you on. And so you can have the authorization to sell the bonds, but nobody will buy them. Or they'll buy them at such a rate that you won't get what you should get for the bonds.
But the state, at this point anyway, there's no legislation to...
There is no, well, yeah, the state's got a number of legislations that are requiring people to do it. But as far as I know, none of them have passed yet. There are no less than three bills revolving around GASP 45 for fiscal solvencies. In fact, there's a provision in the governor's budget this year to provide money to school districts, I think up to 15,000 a year, to go out and get your actuarial study done. There is at least one school district in the state of California that has a billion-dollar liability.
A billion?
Billion, yes, for retiree benefits. I know I've talked to, in one of the conferences I was at, I was around some community college people and they said they had $24 million liabilities and they had put away about $5 million.
And what is ours according to your, the total?
It'd be 30 million, well, 18-point something, yes. I'd have to look and see again at the report.
Where did I get the number, 936,000 a year?
I'm not certain.
Oh, I thought it was from you. 977.
If I told you 936, that was an error on my part. It's 977 is the total.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
All right. Well, I guess that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. These were numbers that we have been waiting for and though they give us some concern, we're at least happy to know what they are. Okay, board members. If we are done with this item, then we will adjourn into closed session with the labor negotiator.